Session of the City Council to order. We have a big agenda, have lots of people here who want to speak tonight, so let's get started. Our first clause to order, and Brandon Huckabee will lead us into two places.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Monique, the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. We have a presentation of an award to Stevensville Parks and Recreation and Stevensville ISD by the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation.
Could you intend to skip the invocation order?
I can't read. We'll go ahead and do that, come on up, we'll do that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You betcha.
My name is Mark Lord, I'm the Executive Director of Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, and I want all of y'all to know how lucky you are that I'm here to give this award in your city, because the award we're giving is the TAF Contributor's Award. It's not to our members, but it's to an outside group that's being recognized by our member of making their job possible and as good as it is. C V and Ashley doing a fantastic job, they couldn't do it without Stevensville ISD facilities and support. On behalf of Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, I would like to present to you the Contributor's Award for two things. It's not always this way in all cities, a lot of times there's this is ours, that's yours, y'all's tax dollars, this is how it's supposed to work. So, thank y'all very, very much.
We've got some pictures, everybody take some pictures here. Yeah, real close.
Thank you, Ms. McGinn.
Thank y'all very, very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Out, next is always good about pointing out my shortfalls.
Which there are many.
Which are many, of course, the Lord will tell you that. The next item we're going to go to is the invocation, and Wayne Hancock from the Cross Timber Church Christ is here to lead us in a prayer.
Let us pray. Most merciful Father, our Lord and King, ask for your special presence here this evening, that you grant your knowledge and wisdom to all the members of this council and all the leaders of this city, and that they may lead this city in justice and in truth. May the decisions, ordinances, laws may be made here, be made for the good and welfare of all citizens of this community. We ask for your continued blessing upon this council, upon the city of Stevensville, upon the state of Texas, and these United States, that they may be a place where your justice reigns. This we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, sir, and again, thanks to the Mr. Alliance for always supplying us that opportunity. Next item is general, citizens' general discussion, do we have anybody like to approach the City Council, general items, we have specific issues? No, that's been canceled. I'm sorry, we have one item that's been canceled. You could short out, now that one, it wasn't my fault. We're gonna, the next item was St. Gobain inclusive playground equipment, and someone was sick at St. Gobain, wasn't able to be here to not present. So, we'll get that at the next council meeting. General discussion, anybody have anything I want to discuss with the City Council, general items, if so, three minutes? Now, this is about Dublin Street, if that one, we'll add you to the list here. Yours is about Dublin, it's not about Dublin, is yours about Dublin Street?
Oh, yes.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna come up here in a minute and call that specific item, yours is not. Three minutes, tell, give us your name and your address.
Okay, this is, I'm Courtney Roach, my address is 820 North Charlotte Street, or Avenue, excuse me. On Sunday, I had an incident that happened to my two-year-old at Purple Goat, and I understand it's out of city limits, but I just want to know if there is a safety regulation on playscapes in E wrath County itself? Because Olivia, my daughter, she was dangling by her head at nine feet on the Purple Goat playscape. So, I just want to know what I can do further to that.
Do you want to address that, Alan?
The, excuse me, the county may have some specific guidelines, if you'll give me a call, Courtney.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'll get ahold of Judge Campos and find out what his regulations are. They may or they may not, if not, I think the state of Texas probably does.
Okay, perfect, and then not only was that, it was a 12-inch slot that she fell through, and then also there was like screws as well, as like, it wasn't just that safety concern, there was multiple safety concerns. And usually, I'm not the mom to like, well, yeah, go ahead, but, so I just need to, want to make sure that's safe for everybody.
Okay, if you'll give me a call tomorrow, the next day, I'll get ahold of Judge Campos.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is considering change of the date of the October regular City Council meeting. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the October meeting, I believe, is October 5th, which is the night before the TNO conference starts. Historically, when that has happened, we have either set the day forward or set it back. I believe, Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about that before, which will be the Monday before, it'll be by 3:00 as usual. But, but staff respectfully recommends that we change the date of the October regular meeting.
Questions for Alan.
Do we have committee meetings scheduled for the 28th still?
Yeah, no, sir, I think the committee meetings are the 21st or the 20th, no, they are the 28th. They are the 28th.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? I hear a recommendation, or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move the meeting to the 4th.
Second, have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Next item, consider approval of ordinance submitting the city of Stevensville policy procedure manual by adoption of Chapter 413 Mental Health Policy. Let the chief make that presentation.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, effective September 1st of this year, a new law went into effect under SB 1359, codified under Chapter 614 of the Texas Government Code, subchapter A1, requiring law enforcement agencies to establish a mental health leave policy for peace officers who are involved in a traumatic incident, should they need to seek mental health assistance to recover from what they have had to deal with. And so, there are certain guidelines related to, to the law there that have been added to the, to the chapter there as a, as example there for you under Chapter 4, City of Stevensville, 4.13 Mental Health Leave. We as a city have chosen to take that a step further, and add firefighters, EMTs, or telecommunications, and public safety employees that may be involved in a traumatic incident, where they either respond to, help with the investigation of, or deal with the aftermath of those type of incidents. And state law requires that it be confidential, and it not be a punishment to the employee to take that leave to seek, for example, such as a police psychologist, someone to help them become a productive member again, and deal with what they have had to deal with, and respond to. And so, the state law requires last, as soon as practicable after September 1st, that this policy be established. And again, you have a sample of that in there and available for any questions.
Questions for Chief, or for Alan?
Chief, do we have an existing policy that covers any of these items?
No, well, we, we have similar policy where we, we've basically somewhat done that kind of on our own, taken care of them when needed, and this just codifies it as a standalone policy.
Okay.
So, we have been very good about it in the past.
I thought that we had, but this may formalize it perhaps.
Correct, absolutely it does, yes, sir.
Other questions? Not questions since we modified the law, or added to the policy, why did this not go to the committee, personnel committee?
I believe it was discussed with Mr. Pendleton, and he said to bring it to the council, I'm not absolutely sure of that, I believe we did do that. I'm looking for...
But it didn't go through personnel committee?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
We can send it back through Personnel Committee, I mean, it just says as soon as, after September 1st.
Well, the reason I ask, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying that, that we're, it's one thing for us just to change ordinance based on what the law says we have to do, and we added to that other personnel, so I thought it would be appropriate for the committee to look at that. So, anybody disagree with that?
I apologize for that.
I mean, I don't mind taking a motion tonight, voting on it, just that's my good feeling.
We ought to put it back into Personnel Committee.
Y'all have a problem with that?
I didn't hear. You didn't hear?
I couldn't hear.
Down here, we said, let's go ahead and send it to committee, back to committee, y'all agree with that? Is that okay with you to do that, we'll get it, we'll have the next committee meeting when?
28.
28.
28.
Well, what's the law say we have to implement by?
As soon, said, as soon as practicable after September 1st, for peace officers only.
Okay, for peace officers only.
As soon as practicable after September 1st.
So, that'd be my recommend, Leanne?
I just have one question, so, there's nothing like this for fire department, EMS, all that, they don't have any, we don't have anything like that set for them?
And the Texas Police Chiefs Association and cities across the state are taking it upon themselves to extend it further beyond the peace officers, based on the totality of those responding to, for example, a fatality crash involving children, multiple individuals, different things like that, shootings, homicides, that there will not be just peace officers responding to those incidents, or investigating them.
I think it's probably a good idea, we just need to, I think we need to have committee look at it, and ask questions. Okay, we'll refer that back to committee.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, budget, fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, is that gonna be Monica, or is it gonna be Justin?
Be Monica.
There's some slides, we're gonna kind of go to square one basics for a lot of the people out there that might have been looking and, and not have been following the whole budget process that's been going on for several months now, but every citizen in Stevensville that owns property gets a property tax bill from the county assessor's office, and that is made up of several component rates. The city of Stevensville is one of the entities that our rate is part of that, we're about 21% of the, the total rate on the tax bill. And what that does is that funds our general fund, next slide please, which you can see on our general fund, between our sales tax and our property tax, our ad verum tax, we're about 80, or 75% of our general fund revenue. When you add in the rest of our taxes, like the mixed strengths taxes and our franchise fee taxes, we're about 86% of the general fund revenues comes from taxes. That money, next slide please, is spent on our general fund expenditures, and as you can see, our public safety, which is our police fire, a small amount of court, is 50%, 57% of our general fund expenditures, Colter and Rec is 18%, general government is 15%, our public works is 6%, and our development services is 4% of our total budget. And that's salaries, operating, capital expenditures, the, the whole ball of wax. So, this year, we've got in our budget, a, you skipped a slide. This year, we have in our budget, an adopted proposed tax rate of .4420. And so, what is those tax dollars purchasing for our citizens? In our public safety, there's a new traffic officer position. We have replacement and equip five patrol units, equipment to make an existing unit a patrol unit, purchasing a radio and communication system for public safety, replacing an ambulance, replacing the self-contained breathing apparatus system for the fire department, replacing three cardiac monitors, and repair and upgrades to the fire training facilities. In our culture and recreation, we have two new building and grounds maintenance positions to bring all our mowing in-house, which conservatively should save us about $20,000 a year. We have mowers, a truck, and a trailer for the building and grounds maintenance crew, replacing two mowers for the park, replacing a mower and a tractor for the cemetery, picnic tables and shade structures for our Collin Street Trailhead, which is from our Parkland dedication funds, and $100,000 towards our inclusion playground, also from Parkland dedication funds, and some minor library and senior center improvements. We also have where we're transferring $1,174,069 from our general fund to our capital projects fund for our annual street maintenance and for Lockhart Road. There's $60,000 for a skid steer for our street maintenance department, and we're replacing a truck for our street maintenance crew. So, that's what's in the budget this year, just kind of in a nutshell.
Any questions?
What do we, Stacy, tonight, approve the ordinance for the budget?
Yes. You need to go into the...
All right, we enter a public hearing on the budget, does anyone like to come speak for or against the budget presented as Monica did tonight? Wave your hand, it's kind of like in an auction, you know, you get to stand up, you raise your hand. Hearing none, close the public hearing, consider approval of an ordinance.
Mayor, make the motion to approve ordinance number 2021-0-27.
Have a motion, Justin, a second, who's second at, Leanne?
I voted in, I both did.
Okay, I'll give it, Leanne, she hadn't done much so far, as far as motions. She's way down at the end of the line, kind of a little humor here, have a motion, a second, further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote, place one?
Yay.
Two?
Yay.
Three?
Yeah.
Four's absent, five? Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight? Motion passes. Seven, yes, yays. Do I hear another ordinance? I'm sorry?
I don't know if we were cheering or saying yes.
There you go. All right, next item, consider approval of an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2021-22 fee schedule.
Monica, do you have anything else on that one?
No, this is a fee schedule that was included for our budget, there, there are several changes in it compared to last year. We did increase some parks and leisure fees, we increased some water and sewer rates, and some things of those nature, and we just...
Questions for Monica?
Monica, so this is different than the approval from last year's fee schedule that we approved, that had a, a series of gradual changes?
This did include for the water, well, for the sewer, we did include a 50, 50 cent base rate increase for every category of sewer customer, and then there was a 25 cent per thousand gallon. So, that's different than what we did approve last year, and we still have the, I think, coming on the, maybe the 28th as well, the rate study from Freezing Nichols to go over with you.
Other questions?
The only change in the parks fees, we're actually just adding the non-resident fees, correct? I think most of the, most of the resident fees, the same.
There, there were a few changes and additional fees added for small things, I think we did some temporary fencing and some things of that nature.
Some new items, yeah.
Right, but for the most part, it was just adding the non-resident, yes.
Anybody else? Hearing none, do you have a motion, a second?
Mayor, make the motion that we approve ordinance, ordinance number 2021-0-28.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Quick on the trigger.
We're gonna call Brandon a second on that one, he's at the other, he got the two ends there, booked ended. All right, further discussion, see the vote, all in favor say, oh, excuse me, there's a roll call vote as well? Stacy was wrong? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion passes, thank you. Money and Development Commission, Mr. Kellen?
Sarah, Mayor, Council, I have three items for you tonight, the first one is applicant Baron Stark, engineers representing 555 Dublin Avenue LLC, they were requesting replata property at 555 Dublin. This is parcel R 73140 of City Addition Block 72 and Block 73, parts of, to the city of Stevensville, E wrath County, Texas. They're requesting approval of a preliminary plat, which is combining two parcels. The applicant has submitted the plat with all the related submittals, those are under review now by staff, and we are moving forward. On those reviews, the plat meets the requirements for recordation. The Planning and Zone Commission convened on August 18th, 2021, and by unanimous vote, recommended the City Council approve the plat. We have maps included in the staff report for you, and also, Mayor and Council, we have a letter of opposition from Ms. Cassie Petty, and then also in your packet, we have the plat for 555 Dublin. It is staff's opinion that this plat meets the legal requirements. The recommendation tonight is that we approve the plat. If the plat is denied, it has to be denied with conditions where we cite the reference to the state law that requires the, the conditional approval for the plat. In other words, if they make the, if they, if we have any type of conditional, condition that we place on the plat for approval, we specify what the condition is, cite the reference to law, as soon as that is completed, then the plat will be up for approval. And so, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve? When was all of this area rezoned?
We know that it's dated back to at least 2018 on the rezone, and so, that's, that's what I have record of.
According to the map that you presented us, there is a huge, huge section of Stevensville, not just this property, but going all the way to Long Street, it looks like. A lot of which is residence, single-family residence. In the future land use plan, it says that this is single-family, but in the current zoning, it's R3 multifamily. So, I was trying to get an idea of when it was zoned for a large section that includes single-family residents when it, when it became rezoned.
Yes, sir, and we did look at that, and like I said, we have records stating back to 2018, nothing before that, if we could, if we could actually...
Two years, three years?
Yes, sir. So, prior to that, we were not able to find anything in the city records, but we can continue to look at that. Again, this is a replat request, not a rezoning request.
Right.
And because of that, the, the zoning has already been established, and this is a permitted use for the, the current zone. And so, the project falls under the permitted uses, and therefore, tonight is really, is to consider the replat.
I understand that, I'm trying to get a historical perspective on it.
I understand. 2018 is as far as I can say that we actually have record of.
You, when will, will this come back in, is when it's, I mean, I've looked at the picture of the plat, and, and everything, will it come back in, it shows one exit out of, and entry into the property?
Correct.
And everything. If we go along with planning and zoning tonight, and agree to this, will there be any changes to that in the future? Or will there be, the ingress and egress into this property will remain the same?
What, during the Dublin Street?
Yes, sir, I believe during the development review process, of course, as staff looks at this plat and goes through the project with the developer, if there are any shortcomings as far as ordinance requirements, things of that nature, then we will certainly make changes. This is a preliminary plat because they'll have to do certain public improvements, and then we won't accept the final plat until the public improvements are completed and accepted. accepted. We have done some preliminary reviews of this project in pre-development meetings, and the single access into and out of meets the requirement for the entry throat for this project. So again, we will look at that more closely as we go through the development review process, but in the early stages, we think that this particular plat and the proposed project are certainly within the confines.
So public safety is, looked it through it?
Yes, sir. We've had...
In Sandoff on?
We've had multiple departments looking at it already. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just to be sure I understand, so if there were to be a denial, a disapproval for any reason, or a conditional approval, there has to be a letter of the law that is the reason for that disapproval, is that correct?
That's correct, that's a requirement of the local government code, which I believe is 212.
And so staff has reviewed everything, and it fits state law?
Yes, sir. We believe the plat is legally binding document at this time, that it meets the requirements of the city ordinance and state law.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we're gonna enter into a public hearing to address the replat, and I'll be frank with you, I've heard lots of comments, lots of calls, and so I encourage those who are calling to come up and speak their piece before the council. And so if I have two requests up here, one is for a Cassie Petty, and it says she is represent, are you, who's Cassie? Are you representing the neighborhood? If so, you'll get...
Yes, I am.
Well, if you're gonna represent all five, you go five minutes for the whole group, but if you're, if you're gonna speak on yourself, then it can be three minutes for as many people that sign up to come speak. So I, I mean, I just want to make sure y'all are aware of that. Nobody else want to come up and speak?
I'm here with three minutes.
She's...
Okay, so what y'all need to do is be sure there's a sign up sheet over here, I need you to fill out the...
I've signed up.
Okay, for those, okay, I'll get, if you...
I'm with the group, I've signed up for me, because I don't know the group.
Okay, so anybody else?
I don't think anybody down there is speaking for me, I'm just...
If anybody else is gonna speak, be sure that you fill out the form and give it to Stacy, and she'll give it to me, and make sure that we all recognize you, so that you can speak your piece. So I have two requests so far, and I'm gonna note it, note then that Cassie is not speaking for our group, speaking for herself, rather than the group, otherwise you're limited to five minutes for the whole group, okay? So I'll just give you three minutes. So Cassie, you want to come up and tell us your name, your address, and...
Is it okay if I speak?
No, ma'am, I need you up here before the microphone, so we can record what you're saying.
I'm on the speakerphone, please.
No, we got, no, we can't hear you from over there.
I just wanted to speak to everyone.
Give your name and address, so everybody will know who you are.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Cassie Petty, my address is 975 Mesquite. Our community is a very small, very historic community. I will tell you that it's been there since 1930 that I have photographic documentation of. The land that you're speaking of has actually been grazing land up until maybe 2016, 2017, and I do know at that time when things started to change, I think Mr. Nixon's mom used to live in our neighborhood, we used to see her walk all the time. Our homes, my home, has been in my family for four generations. And I don't think that this project is a safe part for this community. The access to in and out of our community will not even tolerate a large fire truck. If there are cars on either side of the street, which there always are because we have tiny lots, you could not get an emergency vehicle through that area. Adding 200 to 400 cars daily for kids to live there is gonna put the elderly people that walk, my kids, the smaller kids, that are all walking to school and in that neighborhood regularly, in jeopardy, because the more traffic you have, the more accidents you have. There's only one entrance, it is on a dead curve of a very small street, there's already quite a bit of risk when you try to pull onto Alexander Road or Long Street. Long Street also doesn't tolerate that kind of traffic because of the narrowness of that area. And I would say that that property is also in a flood zone, and if I'm not mistaken, the code for the city, and I can't quote the code, but I did read it, if it's going to cause a risk of flooding or property damage to the nearby homes, it is to be denied. And when you build up that plat to house a multi-story unit, it will cause more flooding. Dublin Street already floods every time it rains, it floods significantly, comes up over the edge of the curbs and up towards the houses. Some of the houses have sewer waste that comes up into their homes when that happens. I just think when you look at all of this, the community should be considered before building something like that. It is a very small area. It looks like a lot, it goes all the way down to the river at the park, but that is not a safe place to put that kind of a traffic load. It's just not safe. So we are asking for reconsideration of that and to consider the community. There's lots of places that we can build and allow for student housing, but that's not one of them that it's safe. That's my opinion respectfully.
Thank you, ma'am. I have questions for Cassie.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I also have a request from Suzanne.
My name is Suzanne Stratman, I live at 955 Mesquite Street. It's not a street, it's a lane. It's not a street, it's a little lane, it's short, it's narrow. I agree with what the lady in the pink said about the getting vehicles on. We barely have parking for the people who live there, and we have no students, we have some young people who load the street up with big vehicles, they can't, we can't, we can't handle any other traffic. I agree with what she said about trying to get onto Alexander and Long. The city itself needs to look at those corners, there's a decorative bush on, right at Alexander and Count Street that needs to come down. The privacy fence looks like it, well, you have to pull out and lean to get onto Alexander to the left or the right. That looks like it could be on right of way for property, I don't know, you can't see past that fence. On Long, there's a tree that needs to come down, those are the small things. I came here to find out where that traffic will come out onto our street from. I worried about that driveway, which looks like a legal driveway, but it's a driveway. Will you widen it? I don't know. Can you widen it? I don't know. I don't know anything about what you plan to do. I came here to say I was for it, until Mr. Cook brought up the, where is the traffic being put out? And when he said Dublin Street, I gasped, and I'm still gasping, because that is so ridiculous, for all the reasons she said. I thought it would improve the neighborhood, the landscape, they will have reasonable management, it will make it look better. I thought it was a good idea, I thought you would make curb cuts on Alexander, but I don't even know if this property abuts Alexander, does it? Well, see, okay, so it's, this is really not a very good idea. I have lived on this street for the seven years I've been in this city, and it's been a major challenge, for a lot of reasons, I won't go into all of them, has to do with boundaries, people not understanding boundaries, has to do with aesthetic things, people junking up the neighborhood, has to do with a lot of funny stuff that you get in neighborhoods, but mostly, I saw the city, the city approve what happened at the end of my street a few years ago. They allowed that former property owner of 555 and all of that, somebody put up a big fence, and then he has that, they allowed him to put in a really rough camp. God knows what goes on over there, but he ran it as a, some kind of concern, industrial. I cannot tell you for the past two or three years how many flatbed trucks loaded with whatever, day and night, I'm not talking about three in the afternoon, I'm talking about at one o'clock in the morning, you never see them in the daylight, only in the dark, back and forth and back and forth. I cannot tell you what has gone on on that street, and you allowed it, and it's still going on, and people live in that little shack.
Thank you.
And I don't understand that either. So I ask you, now I'm against it, I don't know how, I will put that, who to write to, is it too late? I'm totally against this, you cannot use Dublin Street and that neighborhood that way. That is unconscionable, it ought to be really, the city ought to go up in arms about it. We are, we are part of Stephenville, we're not Tarletonville over there, and we're not Garrisonville.
Is this...
We're not, okay?
We have a council...
I'm sorry, that whole thing about Dublin Street caught my ear up.
Any questions for her, for Susan? Hearing none, going to the next one is Noni. If you'll state your name and address.
Noni Castleman-Reed, 1008 Count Street and 602 Alexander. Count Street joins it and is right next door, and I appreciate for the time, I'm not really prepared, mainly safety, and she hit it, I mean, this is constitutional, just the safety with the, for the emergency vehicles, won't be able to get in and out with more than, with hundreds of cars coming out of that small entrance into that small neighborhood. I just couldn't imagine, and then I'm right next door, because there'll be cars parked on the road, and Stephenville is a neat town, and I hope that you guys keep that into consideration, and it's just too small of a drive, meaning I live there, if I need an emergency vehicle at, you know, a certain time during the day, they're not gonna be able to come in with several hundred cars coming in and out of that small drive. And so I appreciate your time, thank you.
Any questions for Noni?
Oh, can I ask one question? Because my friend want, who will pay for the public works, like all the, you know, you have to upgrade the sewer and everything?
The developer will.
The developer will? Okay, but that's real secondary, safety is most important, and just respect.
Quality of life.
Quality of life, thank you.
Thank you, Noni. Brandy? Is that your name and your address, please?
I'm Brandy Prieto, and I live at Tinton Counts, and I'm not good at this public speaking thing, but we've lived there for 26 years, we've raised our family there, your parents live there, and it's a very quiet street, it's, that's where, it's, we don't have a fire hydrant anywhere, like she says, I mean, what are we gonna do with all of this? We're taking out a big part of pasture land that's down by the river, taking all of that away to put eight apartment buildings up in our little tiny neighborhood, and it's gonna drive the property values down. We want to retire here, we raised our kids here in Stephenville. We love Stephenville, we love Tarleton, our kids went to Tarleton, but doing this in such a small neighborhood, it's just not fair to us as a community. It's gonna change everything, and I, please, please consider this, because we just want to retire there and have what we have, not it be taken from us, after working ourselves to death for 26 years to try to pay everything off. You know, it's, it's just not easy, you just can't get up and sell everything and move, it's our home, it is our home, and I have people that live next door to me that have been there longer even than I have. But please just consider this, this is emotional for me. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Brandy? As I, some of the folks who I spoke with on the phone indicated, I told them the same thing that Steve said, and that is, at this point, it's a replat, and since the zoning was approved prior, there's, the city doesn't have the ability to not approve the replat. There will be a development opportunity where some of these issues, that's why the ones I spoke with encourage you to come speak about them, because all those things will be addressed through Steve's committee, or Steve's office, and through the development committee, and I wanted also, the developer's here, and he's a very responsible person, and will be one, I thought it needed to hear, he needed to hear y'all's comments, and so I think every one of those issues, he can address a bunch of them, I don't know, he's not gonna do everything that you've asked, but I think part of that, he can address those, and the group is here tonight. So I appreciate y'all speaking, there'll be another opportunity to do the same. How long will it take, Steve, for that, well, you'll have the developer, once he has the development plans, I guess? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, once, once we go through the civil plan review and get over all the comments back to the developer, and we have everything lined out at that point, then he would be authorized to begin construction on that, once the civil plans are accepted. So as quickly as they have been moving, and as efficient as they have been on their submittals, I think that's probably within the next, I would think easily, within 60 to 90 days.
Is that what y'all consider, thinking about 60, 90 days?
I got a nod on that, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question?
The public...
I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question.
Well, the public hearing is over with, but I'll let you make a comment, yes.
We haven't closed it yet.
I have not closed the public hearing yet. I did it on purpose, thank you. Or Brandy?
I'd like to know why projects can be built that destroy communities without all of the community knowing. I really would, because I know that nobody on Long Street was notified. I know that the regulation is within 200 feet of the entrance of the project. This community has been here longer than most of us have been alive, and when you build something that huge in that neighborhood, if you have not walked that street, you have no idea what it's gonna do to the community. It will be gone, and it will open the door for imminent famine, and that is not right for this community, and it's happening without citizens knowing. So I want to know why nobody gets input in the initial beginning.
Well, the process was with, like you said, within, is it 200 feet, Steve?
200 feet, yes.
200 feet, all those notifications to go out, so everybody within 200 feet should have received a notification. If you didn't, I want you to go see him after the meeting's over with and tell him what happened, because we fell down, we fell down somehow, so if that's the case, he needs to know that so he can figure out what the problem is. Yes, ma'am?
That was, we were notified for the replat, but not the rezoning in 2018.
Well, that, that, we, Steve's telling you, we don't, we're having difficulty finding when all that happened and how it happened.
So how is that legitimate if there's no proof of when it happened and when it occurred?
Well, the council made a decision, and they, the council had, the PNC had to approve it, and the city had to approve it as well, council did. So that process is done, and what we are here today is to take the replat and to have the developer here tonight hear what you had to say, the concerns, and I would hope that developer will get with y'all and help deal with some things. Some of the issues that will be addressed are things like if there is a flooding, that was one of the comments that was made, there's a flooding problem, there'll be a study that shows that, and if it is, the developer will have to fix that problem, they don't have the ability not to. If there's, you know, there's some other things that have to be done, they'll help address those problems. Where we are right today is, by law, he has the right to do what he's doing, and the people I spoke with on the phone are real clear about that. What needed to happen tonight was the council and the developer need to hear your concerns, and going forward, we'll make sure that you are heard, whether or not the development is what you like or not, I can't say that, that's, there's some laws, there's some, there's some ability for the developer to make a decision on what is best use of his property. And so that's where we are today, so I'm glad y'all came. I promised that I would give an opportunity for those to speak who wanted to speak, and so we had to hear that, because as the first concern was, at PNC, we weren't offered the opportunity to speak. Well, right or wrong, whether that happened or not, there was an opportunity tonight to give the right for people to sit up and say, here's my opinion. And so we've heard that, and it will be at least one more chance?
Mayor, I spoke of when I thought the project may begin on the 90-day deal. If this plat is approved tonight, then the project will begin, we will not come back on the plat until the project is completed, and we have to get the final plat approved and recorded.
Until the project is completed.
The project, the civil improvements are completed.
So there's no other opportunity for them to speak then?
And this would be the last review before we get into the project.
Okay, then I would appreciate, Steve, giving you direction to sit with these people, make sure the developer understands all the issues, and if there is some issues, I think that discussing flooding is one of the examples. I have a relative that lives on that street, and I do know about the flooding that occurs, and I also know about the, the traffic issues, I mean, that individual that owned it buried a 18-wheeler in front of her house, because it was raining so hard, and it took some while to get that fixed, so I, those are some issues we need to deal with. Now, we want to make sure the citizens are heard, and the developer understands what those problems are.
Yes, sir, can I ask one question, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Who will be responsible when emergency vehicles won't be able to get in and something traumatic happens?
Ultimately, it'll be the chief of police, and the city administrator, and the fire chief.
They will be held accountable?
For, if they've approved this plan, and the plan isn't implemented, if it's implemented correctly, yes, they're accountable for that. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
One last comment, we're going to close the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, will the city approve the streets?
You mean Dublin and Count Street?
Dublin and then maybe make Long Street more accessible, I mean, will they?
Well, Long Street's about, will be looked at. We're in the project, process of looking at Long Street and completely rebuilding Long Street.
Because I think that's what's going to have to happen.
Well, Long Street will be at some point, Alan. We've looked at that in what budget process?
We're going to, excuse me, we're going to look at that in further detail on the 28th. We've been, staff's been instructed to bring that and several other projects back to council.
For a committee or for council?
I believe it's for the finance committee, maybe?
For what?
A work session.
For a work session?
Are we supposed to bring the projects back to your committee, or are we taking it to council?
The utility, we, we're meeting on the 28th.
Right.
With everything, we're having that committee meeting. We're not bringing that straight back to council.
Okay.
We asked if it needed to go to public works first, and Alan said, no, it doesn't need to go back to public works.
Okay, one last comment. Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain to me the plots, the two plots? I don't know, is it all on 552 Dublin? 552 Dublin?
You want to answer this question, Steve?
This property was actually not platted. It had been resurveyed. And so when the submittal came in, we actually called the county and asked, I mean, why are we seeing this, this one parcel on our map? And even on the county map, but we don't have record of it coming through as a, as a replat or a plat with the city. And it had been resurveyed multiple times to take lots into, into one property, but it never really gone through the plating process. So the developers recognized that and wanted to bring it to the city and make sure that it was platted properly. And so, I mean, that, that's how we ended up here.
So the plot is, so two, make it two plots?
Okay, where this?
I just want to say.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, hold on, hold on, ma'am. You haven't been recognized, ma'am. Ma'am, you haven't been recognized. Please.
I know, but.
Please, ma'am. Oh, no, it's not. It's not your last chance. Yes, ma'am. Any other comments? Will take your advice. I will go by, I went by, I drove by there and looked at it today. Okay, I'm going to call another, other public comments? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and hear a motion. To consider approval of preliminary plat.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
You can ask a question.
Does this, can this be tabled? Until Steve meets with these people? And gathers additional information to their concerns, and then brings it back to us? And also, I do not understand the, the reason I asked the historical perspective on the zoning thing was frankly because I thought we keep records on everything. You know there's a record of this being rezoned. So I'd like to know when it was. And, and.
If I could help a little bit with that question, it wasn't much. Steve had asked me to help them locate it. Back when some of these older properties were rezoned, they would adopt a zoning map. The general area, where it's a zoning map. We can't find what that map was. So when this property was initially zoned, it was zoned as part of that map, I assume. I don't know where to find that map. It may be in the basement. But the, that initial zoning before it was rezoned in 2018 came from some kind of general zoning in the city.
Okay.
This zoning was done years and.
Years and years ago, and I understand that.
It didn't change in 2018, is that what you're saying?
It didn't change in 2018, is what you're saying.
I don't believe it changed in 2018.
But at some point, nearly everything has come in as our one, particularly in residential area. So that was, that was my point, I think. Mayor, I'd move that we table this until, until.
I didn't mean to interject. There is a statute that says when a plat is submitted, we have, the governing body has 30 days to approve and act on, or act on the plat. If we don't act on it, then it's automatically approved within 30 days. PNC met on August 18th, and so to table this, we will have to act quickly. And then to bring it back, I'm afraid we'd have to go through the same legal requirements to, to put notice out again. And I don't see how we can do that within a 30-day window.
So we have 30 days, which would make it, what, September the 18th?
Yes, sir.
But you would have to.
Automatically approved.
Or then it's automatically approved?
Yes, sir. And that's state statute.
Is it 30 days from when PNC acted on it, or 30 days?
From when it was presented to us.
Actually from a submittal. It's, it's a very tight time.
Go ahead. We have 30 days from PNC's action.
Okay.
30 days from PNC's.
Which was when?
18.
Uh, PNC was on August 18th.
August 18th.
So we have until September the 18th? I, I mean, to do it?
17.
17.
October, or September 17th?
September 17th. Which is not very much. I made a motion to table until such a time that we, that Steve could meet with people and, and then get back to us with answers to these things.
When will be the next, when will be the next council meeting?
Is he making a motion?
He's made a motion, yes.
I made a motion to table.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. Stacy, when's our next meeting?
Next regular meeting?
When are we, when will this body be back together? I mean, call, break our meeting at any time together. So we're going to be back on the 14th. That's when we have the council meeting on the public hearing, tax rate. So next, next Tuesday. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're tabling, he's, the motion is to table it until the 14th?
To table it until Steve gets back with the citizens and just discuss their issues. And then once he's done that, to bring it back at the next council meeting, or if, if we don't bring it up, on the 18th it's approved. Is that correct, Steve?
Before the 18th, 17.
Well, on the 18th it's approved.
Mr. Thomas, help me on this if you can. I think Mr. King's looking at the statute, and he's saying that there is a 30-day window for PNC to act, and then a 30-day window for the council act. If that's the case, then we would actually be bumped into October. But I would need to. Right.
So we have 30 days from the 18th of August?
So, so again, okay, so that's correct. We have till the 17th of September.
Okay, so that'd be our last opportunity to meet. We have a motion on the floor. Let me restate it. Motion on the floor to table it until Steve has gotten with the citizens and brought it back to council. Well, if he doesn't.
And bring it back to council on the 14th.
I guess we could, I could make that happen. I mean, if, if they have a recommendation, we, I can get it on the agenda of the 14th. But that's, that, I don't think that's part of the agenda. The motion, I don't think, can be back on the 14th. Do you have a motion?
That was a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, that didn't, so we're, we're tabling it for another month?
No, we're tabling it on next Tuesday. On the 14th. Okay, I have a motion, a second by Leanne. Further discussion?
I'd like to have a discussion.
No discussion, it's not debatable.
It's not debatable?
Takes two-thirds of the vote.
Takes two-thirds vote to table a motion, okay?
Okay.
Then we're going to call, roll call vote?
No, no discussion?
No discussion.
Leanne? Motion is to table it until next Tuesday.
Yes.
Place one is aye, place two?
No.
Place two, no. Place three is no?
No.
Four?
Yes.
That's two, three, two, five?
Yes.
All right, I guess you're seven. Yes, okay, eight?
No.
No. Okay, the motion fails. Uh, it's, so the motion, motion to table fails?
I will make a motion to approve case RP 2021-005.
I have a motion on the floor by Brandon to approve it.
And we can't have discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not heartless, I'm not a new mate. I'm not going to give you fake, fake hope. It's a legal state law of where we're at. The mistake with this happened whenever this was rezoned, long before most of us were on council. And that, that is why I preach every week about being involved in your community and coming to your meetings and knowing what's going on. There is, there is nothing, this council, this council's not building these apartments. This council cannot do anything but follow the law, and the law states that it is a plat that has to be followed. I'm the chairman of plan development. We will make sure that they follow every flood plain. We will make sure that they flood every, every ordinance.
Follow. Not flood.
They will follow every ordinance and guideline that there is put in place. But I don't want to give you fake hope. This is a legal, it, it's, it's the law, and we've got to follow it. And I encourage you to be involved because it matters every day, and this is a circumstance where it mattered 20 years ago when this was, when this was changed, the zoning was changed.
No, the last record.
That's the last record, but it was not changed in 28 times, so.
Okay, we have a, we have a.
That's my discussion of why.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, further discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, kind of echoing what, what Brandon said. For me, it comes down to, this is what we legally have to do. We don't really have a choice. So tabling it wasn't going to do anything but delay what we were legally obligated to do. I understand your concerns. I lived on Long Street, and Ms. Elston's basically in her backyard for about four years.
You did?
I did. So I understand, I understand your concerns about the activities that have gone over there because that was in my backyard. So I, it, absolutely. So I, I, I agree. I mean, I, I understand your concerns. At this point, I just don't know that there's anything we can do to stop what this developer is wanting to do. He's, he's within his rights.
Other discussion?
I just, I can sympathize. Statute limitations has run on any action that was taken about zoning after two years. And we're talking about something that you didn't find anything of in 2018, which is two, two and a half years, three years. So it would be a statute limitation, it's probably to oppose anything about zoning at this time.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second, and another discussion.
I can sympathize, Mayor, because I grew up on Count Street. I, I lived there from about 1964 until my wife took me away in 1975. So I understand the traffic concerns. It's a narrow street. It's very difficult to get up and down with, with the minimal amount of housing that's there now. I understand that. Sadly, our hands are tied by state configuration and state ordinance and state requirements. But I'm not without sympathy for you, but I don't know how to help in this circumstance.
I echo that. I, I live in a neighborhood similar to these neighborhoods. I live in an older neighborhood right down here on Belmont. So I understand that, and you see these things go up and, and, you know, we all have concerns about those when we live in these neighborhoods. And so I, I understand what you're going through. And there's another, there's one of these going up right down the street from me, at the end of Collins. And, and so that's, you live in these old neighborhoods. It's, it's a risk, I guess, when there's empty land around you. So I know that Steve and his staff will do everything they can to make sure this thing happens the way it should happen, and that we get everything done the way it should, and, you know, our, our hands are tied, so.
Well, thank you for this. Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Well, Steve, real quick, on the traffic issues, I mean, it's not like they can just go start doing stuff. I mean, we're going to go through a process, right, that they've got to meet as it relates to getting proper utilities? Any requirements that, that as a developer that they're going to have to do? It's not that they can just throw it up and everything's as is, the statute.
We, we go through an extensive review. We even have a, a third-party firm that looks at everything that is submitted. So we, we have a pretty, pretty extensive review of everything with fire, development services, public works. And so we have a lot of eyes on it, and we, we enforce the local ordinances, the engineering standards manual. We do drainage studies, have drainage studies submitted.
And that impacts the flooding on other property too, is what he stated, so.
Engineer for the project has to give us an assessment on the impact, the traffic impact analysis. And so all of that is taken into consideration as the development moves forward. The zoning, you know, as we mentioned, was passed years ago, whenever that was. And, you know, at this point, we're, we're just looking at the replat. And there's, Steve just doesn't give us a lot of room to, to deviate from how that's approved.
Steve, all of that information will be provided to you by their engineers, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that will be done over the next, you're estimating 60 today, 90 days?
Yes, sir. They, they will, as they send submittals to us, it comes into the permits department, and then we distribute that out to all of the reviewing departments. And then we get our comments back to them. We try to turn comments back in a two-week period. So we, we make it a priority on every, every development that comes through to try to, try to put those on the top of the, of the list and make sure we get timely responses back on the projects.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same son opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. I don't think there was a need for roll call on that with her. Okay. Thank you, sir. Now, Suzanne? The comment that you made, the things that are going on there, there's a man right over there, his name is Chief Dan Harris.
I, I, I don't want to waste your time telling you how many times I've spoken to the police.
I want everybody who has that same concern. His name is Chief Dan Harris.
They have told me they don't have time for me.
Well, if that's the case, then you come see me, and Mr. Harris and I will have that conversation again. I assure you, that's not what he's going to tell you this time. He's a, you have a, you have a different man on the block.
They come to my house, it's always, they treat them like a family.
Well, that's the man right there. I'm going to encourage you to visit with him. Mr. Harris, would you raise your, wave your hand at her, make sure she knows who you are? Thank you. Next item, cause number RP 2021-06.
Yes, sir. This property you have seen before, its property owner Taylor Knute with Harbin Street LLC is requesting a replat of property located at Zero S Harbin Drive, parcel 73763, a south side addition. It's block 19, lot 15 of City of Stevensville, Urath County, Texas. He's, we're looking at the preliminary approval for a replat for a plan development. On July 21st, the city council approved the rezoning of the parcel to PD, but that approval was contingent upon a preliminary replat, or preliminary plat being brought back. The applicant has submitted a preliminary plat along with the appropriate submittals for staff review. Planning and zoning commission met on August 18th and by unanimous vote recommended the city council approve the plat. Mayor, in this, during this process, as I mentioned, it was requested that the developer come back and provide more detail. And so if I can walk you through some of the documents in your packet. Of course, we have the maps, but I want to get to the things that Mr. Knute and his team have worked on. So in your packet, you have a floor plan and elevation rendering of the property, of what they intend these projects, or the apartments to look like. We have a timeline where they provided quite a bit of detail relating to the project as far as the development plan, civil improvements, general construction. Also in your packet, we have a, a plat showing what this property will look like. Preliminary plat, again, this is roughly 50 townhome parcels. Entry onto Swan and onto Harbin Street. Lot one, as you see on the plat, is 2.63 acres. That will remain B2 zoning. With the remaining 4.79 acres, I believe, is going to be for the actual PD for the townhomes. We have the development plan with some very specific details on the properties as far as what the floor plans will look like, the square footage, price range for the homes. They get into some of the discussion on the lot development regulation, landscaping. They look at the parking regulations. They, they have adequate parking for the project. Architectural development standards, they give us a list of items that are materials that they'll be using, and even specified the use of masonry at 90%. They, they mention the roof structure, and then also the design elevations on, in that document. They have provided us a picture of a sign that they believe will be very similar to what they erect for this property. And then we also have an elevation rendering and a picture of what the fence will look like that sep, will separate the townhome development from the B2 side. And then also, sir, we have the. And then also, sir, we have the, again, another rendering of the plat, a little more formal-looking rendering of the plat. And so, Mayor, Council, what I'd like to point out on this is that the Knutes have spent, you know, an adequate amount of time putting together a lot of detail, trying to make sure that we can answer all the questions that you may have from the last meeting. I think this is a great effort on their part and really something I hope that we can use as a template moving forward. There's a lot of detail in there that we can probably go further into if the council would like. And of course, we have the developers here if you have any questions.
Questions for Steve.
Steve, the sign rendering that we have, will that be on Harbin or on Swan?
I believe that's going to be at both entrances.
Both, okay.
At one time, Steve, and this may be an Allen question, we also had a requirement that there are some floodwater problems on the backside of the property by the shrink track.
Yes, sir.
We are, excuse me. We're talking to Mr. Knute about obtaining an easement for that creek, number one. Number two, we do have some money that was allocated for downstream protection for that property. It'll be included in the Harbin Drive drainage piece that comes through the cemetery, and that will have a positive impact on his property, on this property. So yes, sir, we are going to fulfill our obligation in that. And again, we're talking to Mr. Knute about obtaining an easement, not only for where he's got to come in, but for us as well. Yes, sir.
Other questions? Mayor, to a public hearing, this points, anybody want to speak in favor of the request? You want to visit?
I think.
Don't he just stand up here and introduce yourself? Probably good for you to do that, right, Danny? Give me a name and address, please.
Taylor Knute, 373 North Floral Street in Stevensville here. Appreciate the description Steve gave. And like he said, we've been working on this for a while. And I think we've provided a lot of detail and given what a pretty good snapshot of what this development is going to be. The city's also been very good to work with throughout this entire process and has already turned around comments on the initial engineering that was submitted. So everything from our end is looking good, and we're just excited to hopefully be starting as soon as possible on this.
Where's the rich connect?
These are going to be for rent or for sale?
All for sale. I'm assuming there will be investors that come by them for investment properties, but our intention as the developers to sell each individual lot and unit.
It'll be similar to the ones you're buying in the process.
Yes, very similar.
They did a good job there. Other questions? Anybody else want to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none will close the public hearing and consider approval of preliminary plat of the property located at South Harbin Drive, Zero South Harbin Drive.
I would like to make a motion to approve RP 2021-006.
A second. Well, everybody jumped on that, Malcolm. I'm going to pick Allen.
It's nice to be loved, huh?
Mr. Nix got to that one. Any further discussion? See you in a vote.
I would just like to say thank you. I, you know, I could have worked, Steve said, a lot of hard work. Appreciate the blood, sweat, and tears and treasure yard putting under the community with another cool project because I think if you go look at what's done over here, it's pretty neat change in the landscape for the betterment.
Well, and maybe setting the stage to make things a little smoother going forward. So, thank y'all.
Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all, appreciate y'all doing that.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Next item, public hearing. Steve, you had two more.
Yes, sir.
It's a private joke, guys, everybody else.
Okay, the next is the zoning ordinance review, amending the zoning ordinance for the addition of a new zoning district to be classified as integrated housing, District R 2.5. So this has gone to, give a little history of, I think you're all familiar with it. We had a project come for R3 development, and that was a discussion that brought a lot of reservation from the community. And there was a direction from the council to the Development Services Committee to look at some of the trending housing styles and how we can maybe bring those into some of the neighborhoods without it being so invasive, I guess, as an R3 development. So when we started looking at the R3 developments and listening to the comments, they were right. The R3 zoning ordinance gives a list of permitted uses, and some of those go way beyond just the R3, your typical R3 apartment. And so with the input from the Development Services Committee, we started looking at that a little more closely. And we, what we did was we pulled the townhome requirements out of R3 and made R3 basically for those list of permitted uses plus the apartment complexes. And so that would be the R3 ordinance that we're looking at. The R 2.5 ordinance, we basically took portions of R3 and created an R 2.5. And what that would be is for this integrated housing that we're talking about, and it would go into the residential districts plus B1, B3, and we might want to consider downtown as well. And so as we looked at that, there were some things that we could accomplish with this R 2.5 that would separate, an R 2.5, make it a little less invasive because of density for these type of developments would be much less than the R3. And so in your staff report, we accomplished a few things with this R 2.5 zoning, and I'll run through those quickly. Townhome requirements are removed from the R3, as I mentioned. There will be a clear distinction on the density requirements for new zoning classification for townhomes, and we're seeing a lot of submittals related to townhomes. So that density will be set at 14 units per acre. And you can pair that to an R3 apartment, which is 24 units per acre. You can see there's a pretty clear line of delineation. The R 2.5 will allow for single-family townhomes and duplex-style housing. There will be variations, any variations from the density setback requirements. We created a, almost like a planned development process, but it would be a little less, I guess, a little simpler for the developer to come to P and Z with the site plan, show what they were proposing the density to be, and then it would come to council for approval. The difference there is that the R3 zoning would require any type of variance like that to go through the Board of Adjustments. And so this just removes one additional step for the developer if they had an appropriate R 2.5 proposal that just was a little tied on the density or perhaps had some setback issues that they needed to look at. Parking requirements for R3, currently, the parking requirements for R3 is two per unit. And what we're seeing across town and in many cities, we're very similar to, that have college, that are college towns, these apartments come in and they lease the bed. And so even though it's two spaces per unit and you have 100 units, that's 200 spaces, but what you're really dealing with is upwards of 400 to 500 potential vehicles coming to the site, not counting the visitors. So we wanted to increase that parking requirement. The, also with this, one distinction between the R3 zoning and the R 2.5, R3 zoning will be typically your rented apartments on a single parcel, whereas the R 2.5 would be more of individually sold, individually platted townhomes, similar to what the Knutes were proposing with their planned development. And so with this, I think the Development Services Committee and council is very forward-thinking when we were charged to look at this, and I think we have a good solution out there that helps us protect the integrity of those neighborhoods that people feel very closely about, maybe reduce the density some where the project doesn't seem to change the dynamics of the neighborhood so much. And so trying to be succinct, trying to move quickly, I know you guys had a lot on your plate tonight, but we would be very happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions for Stephen.
Mr. Killen, one of the things that concerns me is there's a lot of single-family residence neighborhoods now that the R3 certainly doesn't fit. This may be a compromise for that, but it still, to me, challenges those R1 neighborhoods to maintain their integrity. It adds a significant amount of traffic and other things that they do not experience as R1 neighborhoods. And the long-term effect of this, I'm afraid, will be some of those townhomes, if they are installed, and some of those neighborhoods 20 years from now may not be as nice as they look when they're first constructed and first occupied. Those things concern me, and the owner occupant of a single family generally stays and/or the new owner continues to maintain the property. But the townhomes, I'm afraid, are not going to have that. I know that's not something you have to concern necessarily, but it's something that I think I need to be concerned with when I look at something that's going to be a long-term and a significant long-term change, in my opinion. I appreciate y'all's work on this, and I know that y'all have tried to put the best package together that you could, but it still concerns me about the long-term effect on some of our older neighborhoods especially.
Anybody else? I want to say thanks, Brandon, for participating. I mean, you get to dinner. Anybody else? Hearing none, we're going to have a public hearing on the proposed amendment to creating the R 2.5. Anybody want to speak in favor of the change? Anybody want to speak in opposition to the change? Hearing none will close the public hearing, consider approval of an ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of ordinance 29, amending the City of Code Ordinance with the following changes. I would like to add downtown into the 5.8, or 5.8 description. We've got resident District B1 neighborhood, B3 central business. So I'd like to add downtown there. And then one additional change, I would like to add all the setbacks to 15 feet so that there is consistency there. There was duplex we had at 25 and everything else at 15, so just to add consistency to the frontages of the property.
We have a motion to adopt the new ordinance, but adding to 5.8, the word downtown.
Yes, sir.
And to amend the setbacks to all be 15 feet. Is that restated?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Gerald, I got Gerald's second on that one. Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
I think that was made by, that second one was amendment. We got a vote on the amendment, to the amendment first, and then vote on the other amendment.
So we have to vote on just the amendment?
No, you just made a motion with changes.
You're amending the original motion.
He made a motion, he made a motion to amend.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're okay. I think we're okay.
I think you are, too.
All right, let's vote again, because I had a bunch of talk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, next item.
Yes, Mayor, the, in council, the next item would basically just be the sister ordinance that we created to, as I mentioned, we pulled portions out of R3, created an R 2.5. And so this would be the sister ordinance to that, basically just having the R3 without the townhome requirements. Townhomes would be completely in R 2.5.
Questions for Steve. Hearing none will open for public hearing. Anybody want to speak in favor of the amendment? Want to speak in opposition? Hearing none will close the public hearing and proceed, ask if there's a motion.
Make a motion to consider approval, Lawrence, amending the City of Stevensville Code Ordinance, number 30.
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, thank y'all.
I told you, if you ever got less than 10, 30 minutes, I take it to dinner. Development Services Committee, Mr. Huckabee.
All right, I'll go fast. Development Services Committee met on August 31st to discuss our sign ordinance. We discuss ordinance related to murals. We've had some people wanting to do murals about E wrath County, different things around the downtown area. So we had that discussion. Do you want to?
Sure.
Bring us what we got? We made some changes and recommendations to bring to council.
Yes, sir, the, sorry about that. The ordinance revisions that we're looking at have to do with the amount of verbiage limitation on a mural. It's currently at 10%. And so a lot of these murals now are very artistic, and the one we were looking at would not have been approved under the current ordinance because of the, it had E wrath County going all the way across the elevation, which is taking up, the sign's taking up most of the elevation. So well beyond the 10%. So that's one of the revisions. The second revision would be related to the, the mural cannot have off-premise advertising. And so this mural actually had sponsorships with logos. It was at about 10 to 15%. I believe the council suggested that we limit that to 15%. And so with that, we believe that the restrictions will still be in place, but not quite as stringent as they are now. And perhaps we'll see more of these signs across the city.
And so this will go to P and Z and then come back to us, so.
Thank you, sir.
Good old government red tape.
There you go.
Efficiency. Thank you, Steve. And that is all for Development Services.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Mayor, we have two positions open on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board due to resignations. And we have two applicants that the, our committee would like to present to the council. For Place Six, term ending in 2022, recommend Dana Worrell. And for Place Three, term ending in 2023, Debbie Watson. Both have been active, both, particularly Ms. Watson has been very active in the Senior Citizens Center, but so has Dana Worrell. Both of them had, I had said that they would, they'd like to volunteer for Senior Citizens Advisory Board. It was their first choice, the committee met today, and we recommend that to the council.
Do you make that as a motion?
That is a motion, sir.
I'll second that, Mayor.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Are your people here tonight? You want to introduce them?
No, I think she's left. She was here earlier.
She was.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second on the floor, discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Cook, anything else on your committee report?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, appreciate you. Mr. Hasky, you invited the bits.
We couldn't wait.
Couldn't wait.
The committee meeting, the committee met on August 17th. A discussion was held about the need to reconstruct Long Street. After discussion, it was determined that the staff would bring the item back along with several other significant projects and so that the course of action on how to address in the short term could be discussed. Staff was directed to bring a list of projects and estimated probable costs to the budget meeting on the 31st. We did meet, that was our final budget work session. Alan, I think you have a list of some of the other items that we discussed.
I do. Mr. Hasky and other members of the council, the list of projects that we discussed or that we're bringing back for the 28 is from the utility fund. We're talking about Phase Three of the East Side Sewer, the Long Street Utilities, replacement road construction, 536-acre well field construction, transmission line for the 536 well field, and a US 281 elevated storage tank. You'll notice that the ground storage and the airport stump pump station are not listed in that list of projects. It's listed in, under the ARPA funding. The total of those projects is about $21 million. We've also, we also talked about additional ball fields for NYC. The estimates came in between a half million and $2.5 million, and so we're trying to hammer those down.
We're going to work to get those down.
Yeah, we're going to work to get those down. Yeah, we're going to work to get those down. As well as, as we've discussed, the potential for a new senior citizen, senior citizen center. There are going to be meetings later this week, next week, and next week to hammer the costs down, to get more engineers' opinion of probable cost, and to look at different ways that some of the projects can be built for a more reasonable price. And, and so, we're going to also be meeting the following week with our, our financial advisor and bond counsel to discuss alternative ways that we can fund things and things like that, and then we'll bring all that back to you on the 28th.
That concludes the Finance Committee report.
Financial reports, Monica.
Mayor, Council, this is the budget review for the period ending July 31st, 2021. Our financial indicators are as or better than I would have anticipated. For our property tax, we received $32,000 in the month of July, resulting in $146,000 or 2.25% over the funds collected through last July. The 6.62 million collected fiscal year-to-date is 99.64% of the budget, which is very close to what I had anticipated. For our sales tax, we received $614,000 in sales tax in July, resulting in 1.04 million or 20.03% more than the funds collected through last July. The 6.25 million collected fiscal year-to-date is 100.17% of the 6.24 million budgeted, which is higher than the 80.91% that we had anticipated.
And budgeted? When you say anticipate, you mean budgeted? That's correct.
Well, it's not the total budget, because our budget is broken down per period, so it's what we had budgeted to that period. The target budget for operating revenue is 24.2 million. We received 25 million in revenue fiscal year-to-date, resulting in 829,000 over our target budget due to our sales tax and our service charges. The target budget for our operating expenditures is 17.4 million. We expended 16.4 million fiscal year-to-date, which is 1 million under our target budget. Our operating revenue received last year was 23.7 million compared to the current year's 25 million, resulting in 1.3 million increase due to property taxes, sales taxes, and service charges. And our operating expenditures last year were 15.46 million compared to the current year's 16.42 million, which is 959,000 increase due to costs associated with COVID-19 prevention, damage claims, wages, recreation supplies, professional fees, advertising, Mula Fest, and our gateway planning. Do there any questions?
Now, that expense, how much of that is COVID-related money? Is that 959? Is that part of that 1.4?
No, I'll have to go back and look, because I don't have it off the top of my head.
If you'd bring it back to us, or send it to us in email.
I'll send it in email.
Questions for Monica? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Jeff, Economic Development.
There's no CEDAR report of anyone here in Eastside, Missouri.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're aware, but Jeff's father passed away.
Yes, yes, I was. Okay, next item, consent agenda. I've already been asked to remove items 30 and 31. Anybody else? Okay, let's vote on the rest of them then, or a motion on the consent agenda, other than items 30 and 31. Mayor, make the motion. Approve consent agenda. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Items 30 and 31. Ricky?
I just asked for both of these to be removed. One of them, one of them, I've, I've already had some conversations with staff, so I understand it, but I want to make sure everybody else does, because they're both significant expenditures that were not budgeted, so I just want to be sure we have a full discussion on that.
Okay. You want to have that discussion now?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Nick will discuss both of these items, the backflow prevention, CSI, professional services proposal, as well as the Long Street Reconstruction Professional Services Proposal.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the item number 30 is the backflow cross-connection control item. This particular item is in agreement with Hardin and Associates to perform customer service inspections, and what that is, is a look at the protection of the public water system, to make sure that backflow prevention devices are in fact in place. Now, the ordinance requiring this, I'm sorry, the state of Texas requirement came into effect in 1996. Now, customer service inspections are being performed on new construction by the building inspector, but there are a significant number of businesses that may have come into effect prior to 1996, or been in business longer than that, rather, and there are some businesses that perhaps have remodeled and not given the city the opportunity to inspect. So, this particular agreement with Hardin and Associates provides for the customer service inspections to be completed to gain state compliance, as well as protect the public water system. This came about after an inspection from TCEQ of the public water system, and this is one of the items that was identified. Did I have to answer any questions? Yeah.
So it's individual customer backflows?
That's correct.
So the customer no longer goes to an independent contractor to get it done, you're going to do it for them? Or?
No. This is an inspection of the internal workings of the plumbing. So, while the city does have a contract with a company that provides the platform for you as a customer to call a plumber and have a backflow test performed, that platform is in place so that the plumber can then take the results of that test and upload it. But there is not a requirement, or not a requirement in the contract with that other company to come in and actually perform those inspections.
But this will not take the place of me having to call to get my backflow prevented?
That's correct.
This, this is just to help us be in compliance because we send the letters out, but then we don't follow up? Yes?
Well, what I'll say is that...
I talked in layman terms there.
Right.
So this is to help us get in compliance with state.
Right, this will, this will go in and check certain businesses, medical facilities, veterinarian-type facilities, and make sure that they're in compliance with the state code.
Okay, you've just mentioned businesses, but I thought I heard an indication of residences, too.
Well, that's certainly an option for them to perform. Now, if there is...
We're looking at both.
Hardin and Associates will have the ability to do that.
To do both.
To do both. That is correct. Yes, sir.
But our inspectors will continue to monitor new construction before it's approved?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, that is performed by the building inspector on new construction.
So these are, is the requirement for these companies to be having these, to be having these inspections performed annually, biannually, something like that, or this is just a covering the city from a TCEQ standpoint?
It is a bit of an insurance policy, to ensure that those facilities that are not checked or that do not submit reports, the city has the ability to go in and check and make sure that a cross-containment, a cross-connection does not exist, or make provisions to address it if one does.
So is this, is any of this cost passed on to the customer as part of their compliance requirements? Or is it just formed by the utility fund?
During new construction, it's just part of the, the building. Now, coming in afterwards, certainly all that's on the table for private business to come into compliance with, with the code.
Now, if I read this correctly, fiscal impact summary is like $50,000 per year?
Well, this is a one-time.
A one-time?
Yes, this is a one-time.
But it's not in the budget this year?
That is correct.
That we just passed?
That is correct.
Okay. Why?
That's a great question. The, the TCEQ requires us to perform these customer service inspections.
Understand that. But I mean, why wasn't it included in the budget, I mean, recommended by staff to the budget?
Because it came late in the game.
Okay.
He's been working with TCEQ and the response and all those things all summer, so we just recently got all that sorted out. I requested the meeting with Hardin and Associates to discuss the program from a comprehensive approach, from both the front end and the back end. We currently have 300 that are listed as non-compliant, that haven't been inspected, and so I want to engage their services to get that done so that we remain in compliance with state laws.
So if they, if we send these people out, this company out, to do an inspection, someone has not been compliant, meaning they've been sent the notice, said you've got to, supposed to do this test, they haven't done the test, what are we doing to the citizen who doesn't, didn't meet the ordinance, the requirement?
We would try to bring them into compliance, but state law gets very specific.
I see, but what's the city do that's, we're spending $50,000 to enforce what we already tell people they need to be doing? Is that right? We're not, we're not enforcing?
We're not enforcing.
That's my question is...
We're not enforcing.
And my question is, what are we going to, how are we going to enforce it? I mean, what we're saying is, we're just going to go out there and start doing it. If you haven't done it, we'll do it for you, to get ourselves in compliance. And it costs us $50,000 to do it. They should pay for it.
You shut your water off if you're not compliant.
No, we're not, we don't do that, we never do that, remember?
Well, with TCEQ, fine, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
In this particular case, it came to, yes, sir, that would be the option on the table.
Wouldn't we, if, if we've not had, my question is, if I, I have 40-something of those 300 inspections, and if I don't turn in an inspection, we send these people out, surely at least we're going to charge me that inspection fee that, that person charged us, to reimburse that cost?
Yeah, we'll end up recouping that cost.
And so we have an ordinance or a process to do that.
Each inspection is $150. Yes, we'll recoup that $150.
Okay. I'd like for you to let us know how you're going to recoup it, because I don't know, we haven't ever shut off water. We've never done that kind of stuff, so I mean, it's, the chances of it getting slim, I think, and so I don't have a problem with contract, Jason. My question is, what we're doing is, we're telling, we're not enforcing something. The question is, what, should we not be enforcing? Shouldn't we be enforcing it instead, somehow?
It's not a question. We, we have to enforce it.
But I, we don't have the person to enforce it.
Yes.
We don't have somebody following up. We send the automated generated...
We don't have someone to do the inspection.
We send the letters. This person's not going to do the inspections. They're following up to make sure that the inspections get done. You're still going to have to call Lovell, Mamco, whoever to do your inspection, but this person is following up. We currently have a system in place that we send the letter and notice out that you're supposed to, but there's no follow-up on that. So this service, if I'm wrong, this service is to help us get in compliance with those 300 and something citizens, that yes, there has to be repercussions of some sort, shutting water off. It has to be that.
So my question is...
Because that's a TCEQ requirement.
Are we charging the appropriate fee to recoup the cost?
There is no...
Is 150 direct?
You're paying a private business...
You're paying a private company to do it.
No, no, no.
This is a mandated...
But we're paying...
That's just what our cost is.
$166 per...
That would be, we're going to have some analysis as we enter into this, to make sure that we're recouping our cost, and if we see some deficiencies there, then we'll come back and ask for an adjustment to ensure that we are.
So we're paying someone to go say, you need to do an inspection?
Well, it's comprehensive, from the front end to the back end, so it's not, not just the back yard. It's also on the front end, on what's called that customer service inspection, and that was a learning curve for me. That's a specific term used in that industry that's a, a TCEQ compliant kind of thing, and...
It's a mandated expense that we have to do.
It's an unfunded...
It's an unf, it's another unfunded mandated expense that we have to do.
Yes.
As a powerful organization in Texas.
There's, 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 I mean, this guy's still not doing the inspection, the client, the homeowner's still going to have to call that irrigation, licensed irrigation company to do it.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I guess, actually, we should take each of the items as we pull them off individually. So, do we have a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Hardin and Associates to conduct customer service inspections?
So, Mr.
Ricky makes the motion?
Second, then.
Next one makes a second, more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Number 31.
Okay, number 31. This is the contract with Friesen Nichols as directed in our August 31st budget work session to bring forward a professional services agreement for the reconstruction of Long Street. This is the reconstruction of Long from Graham to Alexander. Graham to Race will comply with the recently passed Brick Street Ordinance, and we'll have Brick put in. This professional services agreement accounts for the replacement of the dilapidated water and sewer that's under there, as well as coordination with the gas company that is, you know, has utilities in there as well. So, the design cost is $594,700. That estimated construction cost is approximately $5 million. One of the bigger pieces of that, including the water and sewer, is a look at the drainage that goes through there, replacement, again, replacement of the utilities, but the inclusion of ADA accessible sidewalks.
Both sides or one?
Both sides. Again, all that's up for debate when you get the price tag. We can structure that with alternates, but we need to have the design put in place as well.
You sure you give Mr. Nick's first about that? And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The timeline for the design is approximately nine months because of the, it is extensive. There is some, some stormwater analysis as well. The timeline for construction is 12 months after it goes out for bid, so...
So bids will go out when? If we approve it tonight?
Mayor June, you would have the design put in, you'd advertise that job. Being a large job, you probably want to advertise that for 30 days, much like we're doing Harbin right now. Once that award comes through, you'd probably have 30 days for bonds and insurance to come in. That is standard as well. Your timeline for construction would be, therefore, August or September of 2023 completion.
Okay.
So the funds for this $594,700 would come out of the utilities fund balance, correct?
And I understand we're going to have a discussion about that on the 28th.
Right.
Other questions?
But if we approve it tonight, we're approving that money, so... That's correct. So it would come out of the fund balance right now? It'll come out of somewhere, yes.
That's, that's why I wanted to discuss it.
So it will come out of fund balance? Yes, sir. For now? At this point. Then we, if we were to issue COs for construction, we could pay the fund balance back for this through that CO. That is correct. You can, you can do a reimbursement of yourself for soft costs. Okay. But this will, this will give us a much better idea of cost when we get ready to issue, should we issue COs? We would have a much... It will give you an accurate indication of the cost so that you can evaluate funding mechanisms if you wish to proceed. You were that much better than I did.
Is there, and I guess the possibility, is part of the ARPA funds in?
Yes, sir. 2.6 million, then change.
That was some discussion, too, was the possibility that soft costs are funded by the ARPA funds?
Yes, sir. And it can.
It can or cannot?
It can.
Okay. But it still can be reimbursed of, if rates as well, paying yourself back.
We'll get the hard cost, but rates, the soft cost, free money.
Soft cost, okay. Further discussion? Or hear a motion?
F and I will have a graduated pay structure on this as they work. They will issue invoices. It's not all due at one time, I guess is my question.
That's correct. There is a timeline that identifies which percent plans will come through. There's also a liquidated damages clause in here to ensure that they're delivered on time.
Okay. Good. Hear a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Friesen Nichols.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. All right, comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, remind, we talked about this first part pretty much all of the night. Tuesday the 14th is a meeting to discuss the, the tax rate, to vote on the tax rate. Tuesday the 28th is our committee meeting. October the 4th is our, our regular meeting for next month. I wanted to remind everybody, I'll be out beginning this, this Friday, and I'll be out for, for two weeks. Also, coffee with Congressman Williams is Thursday at 8:00 AM at Cold Smoke Craft House. It's right next to the Barefoot Outfitters on Washington, across the street from Tarleton, used to be the other coffee shop. Sorry?
Beanson.
I wasn't going to mention the pedeterics name, but it's just the other coffee shop. Also, I, I wanted to talk to you, so many times we, we say we work with other agencies and we don't really get an opportunity to tell you how. We received a call today from, from some folks at Tarleton State. They have many students currently on COVID restrictions. Some of those students do not have access to Wi-Fi from their dorms. We were asked if there was any way we could help. We have Wi-Fi in the Cowboy Plaza as well as at Splashville and the parks or the amphitheater. We have informed the Tarleton folks that, that so long as COVID protocols are followed, that their students are more than welcome, as anybody is, to use the Wi-Fi at those locations. And that was one of those things where the question came in, we made, made the answer and, and everybody's happy about it. So I want you guys to be aware of that.
Thank you. Leanne, comments? Justin?
I just want to send our thoughts and prayers out to the fire department and, and that, that family. I know that's a tight knit group and we're praying for them, so.
I just want to commend Kelly for, seems like she's been thinking out of the box a little bit and going out and finding some funds, some additional funds from organizations, and that's something we haven't seen in, in a while. And so thank you for doing that and, and helping to further things down at the park with some creative funding mechanisms. Good job.
Mayor, on Saturday, 11th, there's going to be a memorial recognition ceremony. And, and it's the 20th anniversary of 9/11. And it'll be from 10:00 to 10:30 at Tarleton State. Field of flags will be on display. The, it's at the OA Grant Amphitheater. It, there, as a matter of fact, I think Dan Harris is going to be the principal speaker. And it'll be a time of remembrance for a tragedy that, with the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001 and Stephenville's way to commemorate that. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Thank you.
Just my monthly reminder, it was, it was good to have people here and engaged in their local community and it's important every day and every meeting because you never know what it's going to impact. So it's, it's important to be involved and be engaged and ask questions. Every one of these people up here will answer your phone call and, and discuss things with you. So please don't ever hesitate to, to call. And again, condolences to the fire department family and.
Absolutely. You know, there's, anytime that someone loses a family member, I can speak from personal experience, it's not easy. And it was the day before yesterday as when Jeff's father passed, is that correct? And so Jeff Sanford, if you hadn't heard, his, his father passed after some illnesses. And so we want to keep him in our prayers and we're going to be visiting about one of, a couple of his projects here in a little bit. So Jeff, we'll be thinking about you here in just a few minutes. With that, we'll now adjourn into executive session. And just for information purposes, there are several items. Judge, we're going to talk about you first. So if you want to be ready, come back there, so you and your wife can leave.
I beg your pardon?
We're going to talk about you first here. So we all come on back here and we'll, we'll invite you back in the meeting here after we get started. With that, it is 7:20 and we will adjourn into executive session and we'll be back.
Back into City Council from executive session. We have some items to address tonight, so first item.
Uh.
Item thirty-four.
Which one was that?
Which one was thirty-four?
Justin, economic development, project blue.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve for staff to negotiate economic development incentives agreement as discussed in executive session with project blue.
Okay.
I have a motion as second. You for the discussion. You're now to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time opposed, motion passes. Project rooftop.
Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to negotiate development incentives with project rooftop.
I have a second. I have a second for the discussion. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time opposed, motion passes. Next item. Who took the...
The, uh...
Judge.
Eight hundred?
No. 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 Lillian.
The, uh... Mayor, make a motion to approve the exchange of the eight hundred block of North Lillian for consideration as discussed in executive session.
You have a motion? You have a second? See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time opposed, motion passes. Personal matters, delivery evaluation of city judge.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, make the motion. We approve the renewal of contract for municipal judge with Richard Petronas for a period of two years.
Your second?
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time opposed, motion passes. One last item. Oh, that, we don't have to do the next one, right?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Either, there were no other items to be discussed in public for our executive session, so it is nine twenty-three and we will sit. Air phone.